I've just waited until five thirty, I'm going to be right to go. Uh welcome everybody, uh tonight is our normal council meeting, the Devonport City Council, Monday twenty fourth of March twenty twenty five. Uh if my knowledge, acknowledgement of country, Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Palau of Pekin people. As the traditional and original owners of luxury water and continuing custardings of this land all too gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. Present in attendance, all persons in attendance are advised that it is council policy to record council meetings. In accordance with council's digital recording policy, the digital recording this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website. For minimum period of six months, the meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. And we go into the apologies, uh I do note, we do have an apology from councillor Lomani tonight. And noting that councillor Bill Chinskey is not in the room yet, she is intending to be here as soon as possible. Uh do I have any declarations of interest from the councillors?
Yes, you do, ma'am.
Councillor Murphy?
Uh oh, we clear an interest in agenda item four point two. I know to proponents and have been engaged by them in my professional capacity as a real estate consultant, I think therefore I will be leaving the room.
Thank you, any other councillor more?
Uh item five point seven, I have a son that plays the soccer teams, junior end men's. I will be staying in the room because no member of my family or myself benefits financially.
Thank you, so the councillor Shane?
Thanks ma'am, um four point one and I'll add five point seven. Um relating to the soccer club, just because my agency sponsors them in a very small amount in terms of time.
And not in the room, sorry you're saying?
Yes, not all.
Goodbye. Thank you. Further declarations? If not, we'll continue, thank you very much. Item three is the procedure, confirmation of minutes to three point one, I'm going to move please.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Murphy and councillor Martin, councillor Murphy.
How are you, sir?
Thank you councillor Martin. Thank you, although uh any further comments or questions? If not, I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider closing.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? I'm moved unanimously, thank you, three point two is public question time. Three point two point one is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. The recommendations there, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, in the second place.
You're good.
Councillor Hollister, thank you, councillor Murphy's.
Uh they're all there for all to see, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider closing.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously, yeah. We move on to three point two point two, these questions on notice from the public. The recommendation is there, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
And councillor Murphy, councillor Moore?
Uh yeah, two, there is two responses, concise and happy with the responses.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Oh, I can hear councillor Moore there.
Thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Moore to close.
Consider closing, ma'am.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously, thank you for that. Three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. If anyone from our gallery would like to be doing their attending tonight, would like to come up and ask any questions, this is your opportunity. No, I'm just making sure. Thank you very much. Three point three is questions on notice from the councillors, there are none. Three point four, notice of motions, there are none, so we'll move on to item four, which is planning authority matters. I'll just announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act nineteen ninety three. But the consideration of all reports under agenda section four, so four point one being. Thirty four to forty four Lovett Street, Templeport, sports and recreation, the information is all there, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second time, so second. Sorry councillor Moore, so? Thank you councillor Murphy.
Uh thank you ma'am, um look, this is just a continuation of the work that's happening uh in this precinct. Um the planners have been very thorough in providing councillors with their assessment um for us to make this decision. It's exciting to see that we've got this level of um opportunity uh to increase the facility that we have there at Valeroy. Um and obviously at some point in time, it'll come back to council for a further decision. Uh with respect to whether it becomes a sort of a greater sporting precinct. However, there was a no, a couple of representations um realistically. Didn't have too much relevance to planning scheme. Um and I think, you know, the level of impact um. Is not that significant and I think the benefit will far outweigh uh. The negative with respect to the loss of a few non, non protected species of tushree and et cetera. In that space that they're requiring, so I commend this to my fellow councillors to support. And um looking forward to the same as previous.
Thank you councillor Moore.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Murphy, I note the two representations, um one, um the councillors, sorry, the officers' comments. Said that there will actually be a negligible impact on the Lions bicentennial park. I also noticed that there was signage issues which didn't come under the planning authority. I was glad to see the councillors' reaction in those strategies.
Thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors? Miss Leirs?
Uh thank you, um yeah, a few metres, uh five metres probably and it's essentially clear. Um. I know that if it gets pushed much further, I'm sure there'll be a fair uproar about it. Uh it's pushing into a park that's bicentennial park, but essentially clear there, uh it it'll it'll allow this pro. This um uh project to go ahead if we if we do that, so um. Bearing in mind that it's getting very close into pushing into the park space, but uh. Um yeah, it's it it is a difficult one and I'm sure uh. People around that area and other people will be well aware of uh what's likely to happen and how it's progressing, so um we'll see.
Thank you, further questions from the councillors? Councillor Shane?
That's me, um yeah, I'm also in support of this motion, um we found largely by the planning um. Planers response that the uh. Area questions just only slightly outside the existing primary fence and that um. Rather obviously, um the public obviously want me to continue to develop the site, um anything other than above what we sign from tonight, hopefully. Will be subject to um further applications and further documentation, thank you.
Thank you, further comments from the councillors? Councillor Hollister?
Just questioning, we can hardly change plan provided by our stroke to the recreation zone.
Sure. Just come out. Oh, it's very good. Uh through you ma'am there, thanks for the question councillor Hollister, this application involves no reason, so the soccer club's not all remaining, is recreation.
You can get future that where the um. Obviously said the soccer club, it's more facilities, what they have. And there's a lot of industrial signs at the back of it, which. They changed. In the future of cancelling the up sorted.
Through you ma'am there, certainly, I guess, depending on the soccer club and what's proposed in the future. I can be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, further questions from the councillors, councillor Martin?
Uh thank you ma'am, yes, I'm supportive of the development, especially when it's kind of laying the foundation for. Uh possibility of being coming from Asia sporting precinct, which I could be, so I could is moving towards in the future. And certainly to have that type of precinct in Devonport uh projects a great opportunity, not only of. Sporting um involvement for young people, but also economically for uh our businesses uh around the town. Uh I note that the fees height has been increased, uh but that was mainly to alleviate the possibility of balls going over the top. Uh onto the street and causing uh possible concern with motorists traveling along that street. Um there was an issue, uh I'll mention about pi- uh bicycle parking spaces. And it was not applicable for sporting uh precincts, uh also par- parking's also been provided along of. Along with three accessible parking uh spaces, I did read the uh. Record of the uh letter sent in by Mr Vingham and Mr Warrens. And believe that the council's task has sufficiently answered uh those theories, especially in regards to. Uh a further extension that uh a full order of anything council have been talking about previously, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or areas for this? Councillor Wilczynski? No, sorry, councillor Ennis, did you have a question?
A question, yeah, uh thank you, uh did the uh our N R M have an opportunity to have input into this? When I looked at the park? Or or didn't the planning ask?
I thought you made now, certainly made consultation about N R M officer about this particular pros- proposal. Being that the actual existing perimeter fence on the southern boundary, that's only coming out of that approximately three, three and a half metres, that's the existing cleared area. So um our N R M officer was happy with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further questions from the councillors, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
Uh thank you ma'am, um really, there's nothing further to add, I must say, consider closing.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously, thank you, item four point two. Is fourteen to eighteen Fraser Street, Spreighton, the information, it's all there, if I could have a move please. I'm going to use councillor Shane and a second round.
Second round.
Councillor Martin, councillor Shane?
Thank you ma'am, um. I'll talk to the representations received on the time in my mind, but um. I'm surprised anyone, I'm excited that we've got further opportunities to open high density housing in Devonport, um. I hope it's a very well known builder, I'm sure they'll do a a great job on this, so it's. It's lovely to see that sort of confidence in the local economy. Um as to the representations, um having read through them, I feel that the planners have provided a satisfactory response. Um. And while not to sort of. Play out their advice, I would just like to note that um there are pockets of um high density. Uh living in Devonport at the moment, um in some really nice quiet residential areas and. From my experience, sort of all works very well, so I hope the planners' response um has uh. Allowed some of the residents um concerns and um encourage councillors to support them.
Thank you, councillor Martin?
Thank you ma'am, yes, I'll be supporting this uh development, uh eighteen multiple dwellings, uh two to three bedrooms uh for the unit. Uh whereas as far as identity, they could say a need for our city. And our uh region that has this type of uh availability of housing. Uh I too looked at the representations from the C split and Mr Jacobson, Mr Nusen. Uh one of the things was about waste management and how we're going to line the bins up, et cetera. Uh that has been conditioned uh in the recommendation under three C, so that's uh is answered that. Uh in regards to pa- parking uh during the building, uh. With the uh, that we set the spaces made available, uh once um. This first section has been, uh first age has been built, so then will be able to be used for. Off street parking while the other sections are being built, so that alleviates some congestion. And uh the theory around stormwater uh has been answered, that additional infrastructure has been. Intentional and will be available when the units are being built, although I see no problem in going with it. Good point, thank you.
Thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors at all? Councillor Ennis?
Uh thank you, um I do, I do know that with the hiding to the uh. Building that we are doing, that means uh this paddock essentially is going to become lots of houses and um. I'm very cognizant of the fact that um where are we going to be? We had no opportunity possibly at this stage to encourage in my force. Um any uh landscaping uh in this area. And it's going to be left up to the individuals, so the developer will build as much as they can. And will be left up to the individuals to possibly or do whatever they want, um. I just think it's probably, uh unfortunately, at this stage, it's um. That they may do nothing and uh which is going to be a bit of a shame, on on. I know we want, but we need to encourage people to um take. A bit of care with our environment and our city, if we want to get a city that's livable and that is really a pleasant place to live. Um we need to somehow encourage people to include this. And so um and I, we we've had quite a few discussions about this and I know that there's a a report coming up uh after about it, but um. There's not, there's at this stage, um I don't think there is any possibility, is there, for us to enforce any landscaping? I know I did ask a question. Is one?
Or either one?
Oh, sorry.
Well, there it is. Well, yeah, I'm through you ma'am there, so I guess the development, there's not an actual development standard per se, which requires landscaping, certainly the. Configuration of private open space to make the, or generally, I think there's four units that cannot make the um. Private open space configuration, but there's certainly plenty of room for landscape.
Hmm. So it with planning, with, there's no way we can say that you need to, because you just look at the planning or saying.
We're under a planning authority.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further questions from the councillors? No, I will ask councillor Shane to close. Where are you, you're over there, thank you.
Um yeah, I actually um think councillor Ennis has raised a really important point. Um yes, we are acting as a planning authority uh at the moment, but I I look forward to um perhaps as a council doing some further work on um. How we might address um presentation to the street um in in areas like this, um but more importantly, my. My hobby horse at the moment is the C V D, I'm C V D cool, so um anyway, on that note, nothing further to add.
Thank you, therefore, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Very unanimously, thank you, it will get councillor Murphy to come back in the room, and more will join it, welcome councillor Wilczynski, sorry, I wasn't ignoring you. Um did you have any other declarations of interest?
No.
I did know, no, thank you. And um more just doing that, I'd just like to welcome our deputy H team here, part of them, which is really nice, love you, I've got either. Miles and beginning at the moment, she's adding a score. But lucky, welcome to have you here, it's our youth advisory group and it's lovely to have you on board here. With uh our staff and Ruby looking after you as always. And um had your second meeting, so it's very nice to have you in here, seeing how things are actually operating in the council realm, lovely to have you. Thank you, thanks councillor, I know if he's back on board, we'll go and move on to item five, this reports. Five point one being enhancing Devonport's green infrastructure, there is all the information there and a recommendation, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Now councillor Ennis and councillor Shane, thank you, councillor Ennis.
Thank you, I I think this uh this report and the recommendation will go uh. Towards uh re- um recognizing the uh the the issues that I've sort of addressed it earlier. And uh hopefully that with the support that our city becomes a much uh more livable space. Uh not only for everyone uh who comes and visits here, but for the people that live here, but for visitors and people that come. Uh will will uh know the difference uh that we can make uh by going through this um. Some of the really good things that we can hopefully look forward to is pulling together some of the really fantastic uh uh. Policy strategies that we've already got and putting together, so it's very clear. And uh forming a policy and a strategy that uh we can move forward and take us in the next uh ten or so years. To become a much better place to live, so uh I would encourage people to support it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Shane?
Ma'am, yeah, I think um. The benefits of this motion probably won't be really fully realised for another ten, twenty years, um. But it positions us to become quite a unique city, um we are growth hungry at the moment, um. My fellow councillor beside me, United this evening, it just seems good construction everywhere and it's true, but this is a city in growth mode. Um we're talking about density, um but parallel to all that, we've got to make sure that what we present um. Looks good, um you know, the the C V D and and the rest of the city um fringe is really the city's business card. And people come here to invest or live or stay, um all these things, these layers of the built environment. Hard landscaping, soft landscaping, it all, it all forms a picture of how we present ourselves to investors and people that come on here, so. Um I think it's just a wonderful initiative and I love the the collaboration with U T A S, I think again, that's a. A very underutilized resource we have when we closed, um and it's nice to see hardship between council and U T A S to try and pull some strategies together.
Thank you, thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you ma'am, I also will be supporting um this recommendation or um. At least formulating a clear plan um for the direction of the city, um having recently, having recently returned to New Zealand, it was um. I took a particular interest in a lot of the places that I went to and in particular, a lot of um. Lot of malls and how many trees are in 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 other cities malls and. And how effective that they are in um sort of providing spaces for people to embrace and and spend time and and. Um congregate, um but also ensuring that uh whatever we do, we provide the opportunity for the community to be able to immerse themselves in these spaces. I think it's important that um we don't go. Um designating areas that um realistically for green space, for the green space perspective. Um but provide the opportunity um for people to be able to be immersed in those and a and a good example is the uh. The Japanese garden in um Nelson. And it was a fantastic therapeutic space um for people just to go and 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 sit, contemplate, um very calming and. And one of the things my wife said, if we had one of these, it would be very, very, very well patronized because of. The the feeling that it gave and the connection um, you know, to nature, so. I think there is a significant opportunity, if we get this right, as Deputy Mayor has outlined, that we won't see this kind of fruition in ten to twenty years. However, um if it's done right, it'll be a good outcome for the community.
Thank you, councillor Martin?
Uh thank you ma'am, yes, I'm in full support of the of motion. Um as we know, that green infrastructure is vital for uh the health. And sustainability of cities uh and communities and it's not just about uh that the trees look good or the plants look good. Uh not just aesthetic, it provides a meeting place for people, it provides shade and it provides a cooling effect on cities. Uh who have a a good uh treetop, et cetera. And as we know, the green spaces also help reduce pollution, uh improve wa- air and water quality. And studies are showing that greenery promotes happiness and overall overall wellbeing. Cities with a strong green infrastructure are very equipped to handle any. Uh climate changes that might occur and to be able to adapt to extreme. Uh weather and maintain long term sustainability. So whilst we talk about greenery and it looks nice and people coming here, does have a purpose, uh more than just looking good. Uh it's about the wellbeing and health of the city and our residents and visitors too.
Thank you, councillor Wilczynski?
Thank you ma'am, uh I'll agree with all of our my fellow councillors, um. This is something that we need to do to ensure our future and give us a difference. We have the sea, we have the green and it is a wellbeing thing as such as our arboretum is. That we don't really get our locals to understand, so again with. This will, it will give us a way forward and uh just. On another note, with development, it would be nice to see that um landscaping or. Like the old mine data, had parks and whatever put in when they develop the area, so um. I think uh we should do well if we uh manage this correctly, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hollister?
Yes, I'm more than I support this, I think we probably need a workshop to look at the options and also how it affects our. Don't reserve environment, playing, open space strategy, climate change, adaptive brains and things like that, so. I think there's a bit more work to do, but I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Um I certainly congratulate councillor Ennis for bringing this to us um from his wonderful conference that he went to in Adelaide. Certainly learned a lot there and he is now sharing the love and we appreciate that. Um and I I certainly think agreeing with what councillor Shane was saying about the fact that, you know, we we've got this growth going on and. We've encouraged that and we we're kind of getting what we want, but be careful what you want because you might get then a bad side effect. And if we can start now. Then a bad side effect. And if we can start now with something that could take ten to twenty years to get it right. This is the first step. We need to make a step forward, no matter what, in being able to be very strategic on how we go about this. I love trees, but I don't want the wrong trees. And we've made that mistake before. Um other councils have as well, but you're putting the wrong trees, that doesn't work. Um we then get, you know, I can remember the trees that were in the mall and unfortunately we took them down because the sparrows were a problem in the mall. People didn't like the sparrows, so the trees went. Um I'm thinking that the whole point is, is finding that balance. On being able to encourage the correct trees in the right places. That we can provide a canopy to do things for the environment, to do things for climate change. And going forward, if we've got a plan, we can only set ourselves up correctly. And that's what I think would be really clever for us to do. And I thank councillor Ennis for putting this up. Um therefore, I will ask councillor Ennis to close.
Uh, thanks, ma'am. Um. I think uh one of the really good things, and option one, eh as uh suggested that uh. We're working with U T A S and I think this is this collaboration with U T A S uh is. Fantastic because uh we've got Craven Coast University. Uh but it doesn't feel like it's in Devonport enough. We need to invite them in. And have them here and take advantage of their their wonderful skills, uh world acknowledged skills. And for them to come and be part and work with council collaboratively uh to create uh. Uh to create this plan, to work out what's going to be our base. Because we don't really understand what our what our base is currently, what our infrastructure, the our green infrastructure, if you want to call it that. How much nature we have. We need to have that because if it's not measured and it's not accounted for, we can't actually prove. No, we are improving or going backwards. Uh we can all drive around and see and it looks pretty barren in many places. Uh we would like some equity around the place. We would like to increase it. It's all acknowledged and. And some of the council have already mentioned how important it is for all of the variety of reasons. And uh. Eh so I uh really looking forward for us working with the uh U T A S and collaborating. And council to have that vision and make it. Eh eh it does take an effort to make it happen. You know, it's nice to have a policy and leave it on the feeds or on on the on the shelf, but you actually have to start with it. And there's an opportunity for us to do that. So uh thank you, everyone, for your uh converts. We'll uh encourage you to vote.
Thank you. Therefore, I ask all those in favour?
Aye.
And against? Unanimously, thank you. Five point two is the twenty twenty five to twenty six budget consultation process. The recommendation is there if I can have a mover please. Permit. Councillor Moore and a second one.
So.
Councillor Holst. Councillor Moore.
Uh yes, I'm happy to note and receive the budget budget consultation report and the submissions. Um thanks to the people who submitted. Um probably the main things on there were pathways, signage, you put paths and bike tracks. Which is also goes into what we talked about. People are really enjoying nature and so they should have. And there was also some interesting submissions, though while they didn't have a lot of votes, actually really good because they bring small but probably important issues like. The splash clock, um just it brings it to light for the council. So that's great. Thank you. Um I do have a question. I note that the submissions were down this year. Oh, so, okay. I note that the submissions were down this year. Um and I guess that depends on how you interpret it. I'm going to optimistically interpret that people in Devonport are in line with what's in our strategic plan and our term plan, so they didn't put in a lot of submissions. But can somebody just please clarify for me? It says that there are. Twenty seven individual submitters, but it also says thirty one submitters. I was just wondering, but do we lose people more?
Yeah, those numbers were correct, uh three of them. So there were, there were some submissions that had multiple people connected to them. And there was also some other. Yeah, there was a number of um elements that made up those numbers, but they are correct. So there was, yeah, I think there was people that put in, yeah, a number of names on the bottom of certain submissions.
Yeah.
There was others obviously putting in a number of ideas and and just one name, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Holst. Thank you. Any further comments or questions for the councillors? Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I I I think this uh. These ideas will help um help us when we get to budget discussions. Uh there's al- always a lot of business as usual stuffs that has to happen, but it's nice uh in discretionary time. Uh spending that we have these really good ideas from people and see, explore and see what we can come up with and uh how we can improve the place.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Murphy?
Uh yes, thank you, ma'am. Um I I suppose it's worth noting that um, you know, one of the major ones that seem to attract a lot of attention is is around funds. Um and it may be proven to council to sort of maybe promote a little bit more. Our cover works plan with respect to particular areas a little bit further out. Um than what we currently do, whether it's through social media or through our webpage. But give an indication to um the community as to what works our land and roughly win um. With respect to, you know, giving them some level of understanding of of what's going to happen and where. Um. And I note that uh. There is, there was one there for uh some increased tracks in the uh Kelsey Greenville. Well, I'm happy to say that our our rotary club has now received a permit to actually put one from. Um man, Mangana, these name, Mangana place, um which will link. The track all the way from uh the Don, the new Don walking track, um all the way through to. The um to the cemetery and then uh through down to Devonport Road. So. Uh you're able to certainly navigate the city, um which is exciting. So and that's at no cost to council. So. It's a plus that we've got community groups out there who are prepared to invest in our in our city and and in those types of activities. So um a real positive.
Thank you. Those are comments, questions from the councillors? Listen. Councillor Holst.
The track that was just mentioned by councillor Murphy. Um have they got all the permits we need now for that to be approved or there's still a process to go through?
That's true, ma'am. I believe that that's got all the same idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Um I will just say that this is always my favorite part of the budget process. Really enjoy the rest of the budget process. Firstly. I'm not financial person that much. Um but at the end of the day, I always love to see and get that feedback from our community of what they want from us. And it's always really nice to either look at it and think, well, we must be doing something right because we haven't had a lot of submissions, or. Are people thinking if they put it on Facebook, we're going to see it? So I just implore the people out there, if you thought that if you put it on Facebook. We were then going to use it as part of our budget consultation, they had to do it through the right process. So if you missed out this year, it's a shame. So please, people, this is your chance. Just get in and let us know because this is the best way we can do the right thing by our community. Um so yeah, looking forward to um going through these and seeing what we can get done. And um. It's just lovely hearing back from our community. I will therefore ask then councillor Mordle.
Uh consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Karen unanimously. Five point three is funding funding submission from Devonport Country Club. Uh there is three options there. If I can have a mover with one of those options.
Don't know option one. Second.
We said that they're on. Thank you, Murphy. Option one. And second, and councillor Martin. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Um look. This has been workshops extensively. Um, this is a significant opportunity for Devonport. And more importantly, for our local businesses. This particular event has the potential at a time of year. To see a significant financial benefit to all our businesses here in Devonport. Not only just our accommodation hospitality businesses. But our retail businesses and all our other experiences that we have to offer. But again, even greater than that, the exposure that our community and our city will get from that. You know, we are on this trajectory of promoting ourselves as the economic gateway to Tasmania. And what better way to actually demonstrate that? By having national exposure and potentially international exposure on such a very well patronized event. Um. The other options there, I'm a little bit perplexed as to um. The other options we're putting in this recommendation, simply based on whilst I acknowledge. That we cannot make decisions at workshops. On the workshop of Monday, the third of March, it was a fairly clear indication of which direction council wanted to go. So hence the reason why option one is the only option in my opinion. Um for us to go now, because it does provide the import country club. The necessary surety with respect to being able to put this event on. You know, this event is being matched by events Tasmania to the China three hundred thousand dollars. Um and the golf club itself, or the country club, I apologize, the country club. Um is very limited in its opportunity uh to seek external funding support because it is a Bowls Australia event. Now, the other thing of concern is in the report. The 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 club had made a request. Uh for significant in-kind support from council. Now, that was dealt with uh after the. The second or first um workshop, where it was clearly. Uh noted to the country club that we don't have that capacity and it would come at a cost. Hence the reason why. From my recollections, the decision was made that we would look at level sponsorship of a hundred thousand dollars. And what it will bring uh to our community as and providing them the opportunity to ensure that the event goes ahead. I would be really looking forward to seeing how many people this will bring to our community and showcase what we have here. Um because we're very fortunate, you know, for people to come into this city and see cranes in the air and the activity that's going on. That is only going to create more conversation around where things are really happening here in Devonport. And potentially bring them back. So I think for the. The small amount of money that they are asking, and I'm probably one of the most fiscally responsible members on. This council when it comes to uh. Getting bang for your buck. And I think we will absolutely achieve a significant bounce economically. From this investment on behalf of the rape hoes. So. I will commend all of my fellow councillors to support this option, that's recommendation. And I'll now put it to you for further discussion.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Uh thank you, ma'am. Um councillor Murphy doesn't leave much left and how to talk to. Uh but of course, this uh is an event of national significance. That will have national exposure and as councillor Murphy said, possibly international exposure. It will have uh an increased uh visitorship over a three week period, I think it was. And uh that will fill out our restaurants, uh fill out the country club, of course. Uh and bring a lot of tourist dollars uh to our community. The thing that the Devonport Country Club came to us with was that their ability to raise funds. Uh and to gain uh other partnerships was very restrictive because it is a Bowls Australia event. Uh at one stage, it was uh suggested that we underwrite. Uh twenty five thousand dollars and provide funding of seventy five thousand dollars. But that wasn't taken up uh at the workshops and indicated as a pathway forward. Uh even though it would have probably saved uh council the possibility of some funds. Uh but that wasn't taken up. I noticed the mayor had also popped that same thing. A couple of weeks after uh the workshop had given the indication of which way to go. Uh to the Bowls Club. Uh unfortunately, as far as I'm aware, it didn't alter. Uh provide an alternative uh. Some money as we are looking to debate tonight. Uh that's a little bit uh unusual, seeing that direction come from. All the councillors, so you can actually agree to move in that direction. Uh so it's outside the parameters of what I believe uh should have occurred. But looking uh forward as a positive, um this will bring. Low busloads of people to our community and put Devonport on the map as a sporting uh destination. And when we start looking at the development of the Devonport City Soccer Club, uh how that's going to move moving forward. Uh the new basketball stadium coming up. It's important that we support these types of events uh. As a request to the clubs providing that steps up. For the workshops, two workshops. It was taken that it did step up and I encouraged councillors to stick to their guns. And uh support a hundred thousand dollars as sponsor for the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Shane?
Yeah, um I've just made some notes while um the council have been have been talking. Um noting that I was attending the workshop online when this was discussed. Um. Thoughts about the event, obviously very supportive of the country club. Um and everything it's doing for the community and rise for its sport. Um but I know at this event, um. It's the first time we've we've held it in Devonport. So my opinion is that the income projections are untested. In terms of exposure, absolutely agree. National, potentially international. According to the document I've read, that's via a live stream on their website. It's the event only, it's not Devonport or surrounds. Won't pick up the C V D or anything else. Perhaps there's an opportunity for us to add some content. The workshop outcome, I don't want to make a big deal of this, but my reflection is not consistent with councillor Murphy or councillor Martin. I don't feel it was clear or unanimous. Um but I just repeat, reiterate the fact I was not physically in the room, I was online. Um. In Queensland, where this event has been held with great success to date. Um two councils, two large councils share the load. Um in this case, Devonport is being asked to share, it's it's being asked to pay the entire amount. Even though one event I think is up in burning. Um and again, with respect, I would disagree with the wording small. Um I think when you consider the amount that we're being asked to provide as sponsorship. In comparison to other similar events, a hundred thousand dollars is not small, in my opinion, but I absolutely respect the way other councils have a different view. Um. I would be strongly uh in favor of uh option two. Um I don't know if I get a chance to talk to that, but. The reason is the precedent um that a hundred thousand dollars uh sets. I I find worrying when compared to other events. Councillor Murphy, just in the preamble to the meeting, mentioned that it had six thousand. At the motor show on the weekend. I'm pretty sure. Council didn't provide those guys a hundred thousand dollars. Um so anyway, they're my comments. In the spirit of good debate, I I accept the difference from. Fellow councillors, but I feel it really does need to be said. I I have great affection for the club, but the amount worries me. Um in an untested event, I I concur with councillor Murphy. I really hope we get that money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from the councillors? Councillor Holst, do you like yourself?
Yes, yeah. I fully support the debate. I'm not sure that option two is any different to option one. One is Australia at seventy five thousand and then an underwriting of another twenty five thousand, which virtually is the same amount of money. We don't make decisions in workshops. The final decision is made here. But. I will support the debate, but that's my opinion.
Further comments? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Uh yeah, I. I agree that um they are very similar, those two, option one and option two. If eh and. If, eh, and as uh, i- if it, if it's becomes as successful as what we're hoping. It will be a financial success anyway. Um, I'm not sure, um, going straight to having dipping the extra twenty five thousand uh, is prudent, um. So, uh, yeah, it, it could eventually do the same, but um, if you're looking at prudence, uh, uh, prudent financially, uh, maybe seventy five uh, in- initially, which is pretty good sponsorship and, um, you know, backing up and supporting the club with the additional twenty five if needs be.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Moore?
Uh, yeah, I'm in full support of the event and think it will be a great thing for Devonport and surrounds. Um, I just note that I don't believe we actually went round the room and asked every single person's vote at, or every single person's opinion at the workshop. And the beauty of the workshop is that you actually have time to think and process the information afterwards, rather than actually having to vote on the night. Um, I think that option two still provides the financial surety that councillor Murphy was talking about. And I agree with councillor Shane that the first year, the numbers we really don't know the economic benefit to the city, um, but I'm happy to, um. I'm not going to support option number one, because I think option number two does still provide the club with the confidence that they need.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors?
Um, I won't be supporting option one. Um, I certainly think that, um, this is going to be an amazing event and I thank Mister Kerr from the country club who's here in the gallery tonight for, um, coming up with, um, the thought of putting this event on in Devonport, it's going to be amazing. Yes, part of it's going to be on in burning, um, uh, this was held on the Gold Coast with two very large councils to fund it. Um, we're not that size. Uh, I'd like to think that this event could continue. I don't want it seen as a one-off. And I certainly would like to see it sustainable. Now, if you just hand the money left open straight and not make people work for the money that they need to make, to make these events continue. You're not really helping the event. So I certainly think giving option one is being put up at the moment, um, I will not be supporting that option. Thank you. I therefore ask councillor Murphy to comment.
Um, thank you, ma'am. It's gonna be interesting. So, the issue, the reason why I haven't put up option number two is for a number of reasons, and that is, it's going to be very difficult, um, to actually assess or even understand as to whether they have met their projections. Council is not supporting the event fin- we are supporting the event financially, we're not paying for the entire event. The event has rece- is receiving three hundred thousand dollars from Events Tasmania. Three times the amount that council is looking to tipping. Now, I think you need to, you need to ponder that and consider that. This isn't a hundred thousand dollars that is going towards, um, this is what they have identified they need to put this event on. If they don't get it, it does not give them the confidence to put the event on. We need to provide confidence. That's our role. Seventy five thousand dollars is not what they asked for, because their projections stated that they require a hundred. So if we don't want the event, don't vote for it, I'm happy with that. But don't go supporting seventy five thousand dollars with a, with a, with a carrot that says we're going to underwrite it twenty five thousand dollars if you don't make the projections. Because they won't do the event, because they won't be able to. Where is the confidence in not supply, not supporting them? And, and, and engaging with the D C C I and retailers within our community to get behind this event? Um, so with regard to, you know, potentially not being sure of what the numbers are going to be. We paid a hundred thousand dollars for one night to have the symphony orgish show. What financial benefit did the community get from that? Now, if I look at that compared to a hundred thousand dollars for one night versus a hundred thousand dollars for almost three weeks. I think there's a significant difference. I think we really need to understand, if someone can clearly explain to me how we are going to assess as to whether, um, they, the, the, the Devonport Country Club has not met its financial projections to put the event on. How do we do that? What, what's going to be the process to assess that? So how do we make a decision three parts of the way? We commit to the event or we don't commit to the event? It's purely that simple, because that's the commitment that they need. They need the support. The state government's tipping three hundred thousand and we're not prepared to tip in a hundred. But we're quite happy to spend a hundred thousand dollars to have the symphony orgish down on the waterfront with no economic benefit but for the neighbours. You know, so I think we really need to not compare apples and oranges, um. I'm confident that this event will be, um, something that will generate at a time of year, in November, four weeks before Christmas. You know, a real economic boom for retailers and for hospitality venues at a critical time of year. Their Christmas will come early. Whether you believe that or not, that's totally independent for yourselves. But we need to make sound decisions, and I, I disagree. Um, there was a straw poll. We don't make decisions at workshops. We had to revise the council executive with some indication of which direction we wanted to go. And as councillor Martin stated, it wasn't until two weeks later, um, that this other option of seventy five thousand dollars and twenty five, that was not discussed at the workshop. Seventy five and twenty five thousand dollar option was not discussed at the workshop. The question was asked, would councillors support the hundred thousand dollars? The straw poll was, yes, we would. So, the end of the day, if we want to support a potentially, um, significant event, if that's what we're about, well, we've got to support it. If we don't, let's not. Don't go halfway. Don't go three quarters of the way. Support it or don't. Because it'll make it a lot easier for the country clubs, um, to make a decision, because if they haven't got the confidence. How are they going to be able to put on an event without it? So I will now put that to, obviously through you, ma'am, put it to the vote and I consider, um, my fellow councillors just what I've just said, because it's going to be very difficult for us to ascertain as to whether their financial projections have not been achieved. And if someone can convince me otherwise, I'll be quite happy to listen to them.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. I do have a last for both. All those in favour of option one?
Aye.
Against? I'll do a sharp hands, please. For those for option one, councillor Murphy, councillor Wilczynski, councillor Martin, councillor Moore. And those against, councillor Ennis, councillor Holster, councillor Shane, councillor John. Swats being four. So therefore, I'll ask if there is a merger of any other of the options.
I'd like to move, uh, option for contribution of ninety five thousand dollars as sponsorship.
Option three.
Second.
Councillor Martin for option three for ninety five thousand. And then councillor Murphy to second. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussions and I fully, uh, concur with councillor Murphy. We're all in this game to support our local sports clubs. This is an Australian championship. That's going to be run across three weeks. At a time where we're looking at perhaps a good Christmas trade for our, uh, C B D, uh, retailers. It provides an opportunity. Whether one person spends five dollars or they spend five thousand dollars. It'll be up to those people being able to meet down and being received on a positive level. And that, uh, it's seen that the community is supporting a huge event and their ability to come and support our retailers. This is going nationally and I would suggest, from what the report Devonport, uh, country club has provided. Is that they will put, uh, branding of the Devonport, uh, municipality, uh, in their, uh, communications, uh, which will promote Devonport and will be seen as an opportunity of a uh, destination to come and have events and have sports. Spain, uh, councillor Murphy had brought up, uh, the, uh, uh, the concert, uh, on the, down at, um, Haynes's Park. Uh, and yes, it was a hundred thousand dollars. It was a great event and it was free. And we've got five thousand people there on one night, uh, were the shops open? Uh, probably not at that time, uh. So in comparison, we're going to have an event over three weeks' time, which is three weeks' worth of accommodation. Three weeks with the ability to go into town and spend money, uh, and the food and the producers around our municipality. Will be going into the country club and our restaurants, uh, to provide that, uh, economic impact. Additionally, uh, from what the Devonport Country Club provided us was they're heavily restricted in their ability to raise funds, including the twenty five thousand dollars that was previously, uh, mentioned. Uh, because they're, they're going to have to rely on bar sales and food sales at their, uh, facility. But during those three weeks, they're also not getting income from bowls, uh, or gold fixtures or visitors from that area to use, who use, going to use our facilities because it's taken up by this event. Now, we have to make sure that, uh, council supports wholly the event. They indicated that they have shown us in two workshops that a hundred thousand dollars is required. And I think we should all support that, otherwise it's like being half pregnant. Well, in it or not, and here's a club that's come and prepared two presentations to councils. And as councillor Murphy said and I've said, there was a straw poll, there was a direction given to the general manager. Um, of C E O, uh, and that, when we left the room, that direction was to come up to this meeting. Stray Zina, option two and option three now appeared. And that's been done outside the, uh, uh, the realms of the councillors being able to talk about and debate about. It was offered, uh, to Devonport Country Club without any consultation with councillors. If it had been done the other way, it probably would be, be okay, but to do something, you then ask to give this for it and then stick by it. When the straw polls clearly set, state, uh, indicated, that was, we should be supporting by a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we didn't get an opportunity to debate the twenty five or seventy five before the offer was made to the country club by the mayor, independently of what those workshops indicated. So I implore you to back up, uh, and support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor.
Um, thank you, ma'am. I, I agree with councillor Martin. The, the fact that outside of a workshop, that an offer was put without consultation with fellow councillors is, in my opinion, a breach of process. Um, but that's a conversation for another time. The simple fact being is that we have gone back with further questions to the country club. They have provided us with a high level of answers, but as councillor Martin stated, we're either in or we're out. You know, there's been enough discussion around this particular, um, event and process, um, and as I said, I, I, I know other events that have been put up and other councillors have got upset because untested events haven't been successful. This is one for two and a half, nearly three weeks. Like, it's, it's not as if it's for a weekend. And to compare, um, setting a precedent, we're not. We're assessing this on merit, and this is a meritorious event. There is no doubt about that. We are not setting a precedent for every club to come and ask Devonport City Council for a hundred thousand dollars. It's a national event. How many other clubs are putting on national events and asking for support? And to compare it to a motor show, to the fundraising community event that is put on every year, um, yes, th- that, that particular organisation did come to council and ask for it. And it wasn't forthcoming. We do get some in-kind support, that's about it. But at the end of the day, you cannot compare the events because they are different. Six and a half thousand people were here for an average of two hours. Okay, we're going to have potentially the same amount of people here for three weeks. So we're either in or we're out. And I'm happy with whatever decision the democracy wants to make, but be very mindful that we are setting. If you want to talk about a precedent, we'll be setting a precedent. If you want to put on a national event, don't ask Devonport City Council for help, because you won't get it. Or you'll only get it half-baked. So, we either support it or we don't.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Holster?
Yes, I support this. I don't think it's any different to the other options, one and two. Literally five thousand difference in the results, I don't. It may have been an opportunity to be funded twenty odd thousand that council didn't have to spend, uh. It's all been big. Lots of talk to get there.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Wilczynski?
Thank you, ma'am. I think we need to support the event. What we should do is work with chamber providers and retailers and other areas to actually make it right for our city, um. If we've got that amount of people walking around our city, we should be able to make a difference. So I should, I believe we should, uh, accept that that would be fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Shane?
Thanks, ma'am. It's like we're wrapping up, so I just want to clarify a couple of things, um, for the record, um. I'm not upset that an untested event, um, was not successful, um. I have no recollection of this straw poll that you and, uh, councillor Martin are talking about at the uh, workshop, um. And I think the, the mayor is really within her rights to have a, a conversation, uh, with the club, um. To discuss alternative options. She would have received after the workshop discussions and concerns, certainly from me about the amount. And in closing, I just want to clarify, so it's crystal clear. The meaning of the word underwrite is to accept liability plus guaranteeing payment in case of loss. So I don't feel that, um, the country club should, should have any concerns about seventy five, seventy five plus, um, uh, an underwriting of the twenty five, that would that would give anyone who's trying to stand the meaning of underwriting confidence to move ahead. But as I just look back to my only concern about this, um, it's such a lot of money for an event that is untested. And I just feel for other clubs that have come to us and really just walked away with a fraction of that. It is great, it's setting in my view. But I do accept that we all don't have different views around the table and that's what makes us such a great council. We can discuss, um, those things as we go along. Thank you.
Question, ma'am?
That's what I.
Um, can I? Just so I'm crystal clear, um, the, the yourself and the mayor colluded with respect to the seventy five, twenty five option outside of the workshop? And you accept that that is a proper process, that that is a proper consultative process with your fellow councillors?
Um, through you, ma'am, I don't, I don't accept your work.
Um, just wanted, so can I clarify then, if I may, through you, ma'am? Um, that outside of the workshop process, the deputy man and the mayor had a conversation and raised concerns without consultation with fellow councillors, um, around the value of the amount of money that was being proposed and that you collectively came up with the seventy five, twenty five option. Is that correct or incorrect from what I understand?
Um, through you, ma'am, no, that's incorrect. Um, for the record, on the night of the workshop, I was unwelded and attended. Um, the following day, within days of the workshop, I expressed my concern about the. Within days of the workshop, I expressed my concern about the precedent setting that should give us, ma'am.
So, for something with your question there, ma'am, so, um. So that doesn't constitute having that conversation between yourself and the mayor and not utilizing, engaging. Um, your same concerns through the necessary communication that you use as we have been consulted with the fellow councillors. For us to all provide input or was that just an in-house?
Um, I'd have to, through you, ma'am, I'd have to have a think about. Who on council have actually expressed those concerns to? I spent a lot of time talking to councillors, um. But I, I can say that, yeah, I expressed that concern to the mayor. I'm within my rights to do so. Thank you.
I'm disagreeing with your rights to do so, Deputy Mayor. It just would be nice that, um. As a fellow councillor, that we would be consulted.
Thanks, councillor. Any further questions or comments, councillor Ennis?
Um, so at the moment, we look at, we're sitting with options three, which is ninety five. Um, do we? Do we not see the benefit in option two?
We're only discussing option three at the moment.
Right.
You can speak to option three. Okay, further comments or questions? If not, I'll ask councillor Martin to close.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, it's been, uh. Comments around, uh, there's seven months left for this, uh. Uh, country club to be able to go out and look for additional funding. Now, the revenue that's told us comes in from the sale of foods and beverages, which is restrictive. And as pointed out, Bowls Australia has made it very restrictive. For their poss, for the possibilities of gaining sponsorship outside, um. If we go down, uh, another avenue. I would suggest there's extra work that the boss, the, the country club have to undertake with only seven months to go. The seventy five and twenty five was put up at the November. Workshop. It was not taken up by council. In fact, we wanted more information. And asked the Davenport Country Club to provide that information. They did so earnestly and diligently, and they've come up with a figure and backed it in. They needed a hundred thousand dollars. When it talks about events, uh, that it's unproven, well, I think it has been proven in other municipalities. Uh, around Australia, because it has been held previously. So I don't see where it, uh, is untested. Additionally, councillors were made aware that the Tasmanian Masters Games repaid their sponsorship of twelve thousand dollars. Back to council. Which, which lessens the impact on council. There's an extra twelve thousand dollars that we have net right now. So even lessens the, uh, the financial contribution that we're looking at now that we have to. So for me, there was a direction given at that workshop. It was quite clear the general manager, C E O. Went away with that, uh, direction, uh, and outside that workshop, without any knowledge of councillors. Uh, as far as I'm aware, I only forgot to find board till after the offer was made to the country club. That they had a wonderful new idea, uh, and I've been driving around and just come to me, so I've gone out there and I've offered it to him. Uh, without any con, prior consultation to councillors. I think that process is flawed, and I'll put the question even with that, is why the hell are we having workshops? When we can all go out and make different offers, uh, to different, uh, organisations without involving our fellow councillors. I think that's very flawed and I think it's very dangerous. I put to councillors that we support ninety five thousand dollars. Considering the twelve thousand dollars additional that Tasmanian Masters Games made about the cap. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Oh, yeah.
Against? Against? No?
No.
Okay, I'll take a show of hands, please. Those for option three for ninety five thousand dollars. Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, councillor Gilczynski, councillor Martin, councillor Holster and councillor Moore. And those against? Councillor Shane and councillor John. It is then brought successful. Thank you. Moving on to item five point four, the draft communication and media policy. All the information is there. If I can have a move of the recommendation, please.
I move.
Councillor Holst, thank you. And a second to close.
The second.
Councillor Moore. Councillor Holst.
All the discussions there and the recommendations will support it.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I read through the policy. Um, it does talk to both councillors and staff about. Especially the social media content. Um, I was happy with the policy.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, yes, I too have read policy and, uh, with a lot of interest, um. It is obviously, um, providing a very stringent structure. For both staff and councillors, um, with respect to, um, how they, they engage with. Not only in public, but for media, um, I, I believe that, uh. This one will be watched with, um, eagle eyes, uh, with respect to. Specifically councillors and how they engage through social media, but also, uh, understanding. Uh, clearly, uh, their roles in engaging with the media. So I will be, uh, observing this one with interest.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, I'll ask councillor Holst. Oh, sorry, councillor Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. I've also read this and found it very interesting in regard to what might be, uh, described as. Restricted of councillors and their, uh, contact with the media and what they can and cannot say. Um, I did notice that the, one of the key aspects of the policy is a designation of authorised spokesperson, including the mayor. Who are responsible for ensuring that public messages align with council officials' position. I thought that was a good, uh, comment to bring up, uh, to make sure that, uh. Public messages do align with council official stance and that the councillors and the mayor abide by that and moving forward. But also we should be experiencing or have the experience of being able to address, um, media. Uh, when asked, uh, about the council position, the one that we, uh, stand by. And any other issues that might come up out of the blue that catch, uh, councillors or that have an interest in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Councillor Ennis?
Again, I, I just think that, so. Get me, uh, let me be clear. What will happen is that no one will be able to speak at all. Unless you're authorized by the man, or the man speaks on to anyone. Yeah, in, like, in media or social media about any decision. Is that what people are happy with?
I don't want you to be interested.
Just to clarify through you, ma'am, that's not the intent of the policy. Uh, the policy talks about things such as councillors having their own social media, um, platforms and being. Responsible for those and, and you need to recognise when it's a personal opinion versus an opinion of the council. And also while that's the obligation on councillors to moderate their own pages. But it's certainly not intended to, to limit their ability to be able to make a comment.
Was that enough, councillor Ennis?
Well. I'm still not sure where, where we'll, where we'll land with this. It, it, it basically is. Only the mayor will ever say any comment.
Hmm, the spokesperson for council?
Yeah.
That's normal.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that you can't speak to the media, but you need to always abide by what a council decision is.
Can't critic.
Yeah. Just point of clarification, uh, that whilst I may be supportive of a council position. Uh, if I voted against it, I still had the opportunity to, um, uh, speak to why I voted against any. But the support's gotta be there.
Yes, you know, you've always known how it works, councillor Martin.
It's probably trying to make clear, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just. Question.
Councillor Murphy?
Just a question, ma'am, just with respect to what councillor Martin has just stated there, uh, just in lay terms, so. If he voted against, he can clarify the reasons why he voted against. A particular decision of council in the media is, is that correct? And whilst he, he, he would have to clearly identify that whilst he supports it. This is the rationale. I just wanted to make sure that's, that was clear. That's any question.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, councillor Gilczynski?
Thank you, ma'am. I think it's very clear that you can have an opinion. But you are a councillor and you run as the council. Um, and if you make it clear that you have, like, the previous setup where. You're against, but it was, it was won by another, by the group. That you can still have that opinion, why you've done it, but. My, you know, you are still biding by council rules. So I, I couldn't see anything wrong with the fact that this is what it's all about, because you can still have. Uh, your own talking and understanding with people, but the rule is council's ruling. And the mayor's always had, has been the spokesperson for the council.
And we're sawing out of our war and then it will be the deputy mayor.
Wherever it's nominated in that round. So, um. I see this as an update, really, with digital media and what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? No, no, we'll ask councillor Holst to come.
This is council's policy, but it's actually governed by the Global Government Act, so. We've still got to conform to that as well, so. Just spills it out probably a bit more. To the class.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Oh, yeah.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Five point five is change of name for the Basterat Maritime Centre. The information is all there. If I could pay the vote.
I move. Thanks.
Councillor Murphy and councillor Ennis, I believe councillor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, look. Common sense, um, and it's like, um, the presentation is provided by, um. The Basterat Maritime Centre staff, um, and the evidence with, and the, the data that they provided. This just makes common sense, um. Prime example, it was really interesting. I asked this question, um, over the weekend, uh, down in that, that space in that briefing. And, um, it very much stated that they're uncertain what it is. Uh, whether it's a cafe or whether it's this, but I think the fact that it is a museum, um, is only going to. Uh, increase its visitor experience, which is only in benefit of Davenport, so, um, it'll be a no brainer this one, so we don't need to talk about it too long.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
I support the, uh, name of change to the museum.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Martin?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Yes, I support the change and congratulate Joanna Guer and staff out there. That, uh, has gone in this direction, because it does clarify what the centre is all about. And certainly puts, uh, Davenport again on the map in this sphere of, uh, having museums in our, in our city. Uh, so yes, I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holst.
Yes, I support that. Does that still stand that Marion Stone is the actual name of the cathedral?
Yes. Thank you. Further comments or questions? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
You see the class, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Oh, yeah.
Against? Carried unanimously. Five point six is the financial assistance scheme round two for twenty four twenty five. All the information is there for you to read. Recommendation is there. If I can have a move of please. Councillor Shane and a second to place.
Thank you.
Councillor Holst, thank you. Councillor Shane.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, this is my first, uh, time sitting on the, uh, financial assistance, uh, community grants committee, um. Some great work by council staff in preparing all the, um, information. Um, a lot of it was compliant, but we're able to work through the, uh, grant applications quite well. Um, I know at Davenport Country Club, it's getting twelve and a half for, um. Improvements to the entry warrant, which will assist, no doubt, with the event in November, um. And also good to see the Mersey Ryan Club. Um, all of the grants, um, were, were valid and exciting, but. Mersey Ryan Club, um. Application, I think, uh, we all agree, will have some wide range of benefits to other clubs wanting to improve their standards, so. Um, I highly commend the motion, um, to other councillors and, um. Encourage many, many more clubs to get their grant applications in.
Thank you, councillor Holst.
Yes, I support the. Embrace of with approved. I think it also goes to show that if you do not put your. Pudings for the previous grants, you will not be considered, so I hope that's enforced completely.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I think the wide range of, uh, of, um. Grants or people that requesting grants is really good and, um, I think the opportunity for. Uh, Davenport to have a multi-purpose aquatic jetty and paddle. Brath launch area will be, uh, a real boon for this place. Uh, families are often travelling around, um. You often see, uh, vehicles with, um. Cats, canoes, et cetera, on board, and I think, um. There might be a real opportunity for us to, uh, grow that space and encourage more people to use that area. And, uh, explore acquaintly around, uh, our beautiful city, uh, up the river. Uh, out to the left and to the right, even up to the Mersey and beyond. It's the opportunity for us, and I think if we, um, promote it properly, um. It will become certainly a destination for people to, uh, come and wet their oar, so to speak.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? If not, I'll ask councillor Shane to close.
I consider it, I consider it close, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Oh, yeah.
Against? All unanimously. Five point seven is the realization of sponsorship funds for football Tasmania.
So, move.
Councillor Murphy, we keep awaiting. Councillor Martin is the second, darling. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Look, um, this is a really exciting thing. I, I, I think this will be seed funding for something greater for Davenport. Um. You know, for a number of years, having my boys participate in the SAT festival, um, it was a fantastic event. However, with, um. Football Tasmania, uh, not holding that event this year, um. And having the opportunity to look at bringing, um. You know, a, a fairly significant event that will be patronised well, because it'll be in conjunction with the Davenport Junior Soccer Cup. Where you have so many teams coming from the southern part of the state. And, you know, with the, the likelihood and the chances that, um, in this, in this cup final, um. That, you know, it will be a sudden, potentially two southern pubs participating. It provides the opportunity for those junior players to actually attend by default. That potentially increases another night's accommodation, um, for Davenport, so, look, I think, um. This has the real potential to act as seed funding for the potential development of the festival of football. Um, for Davenport, um, and, look, uh, I commend again to my councillors to support the recommendation. Um, and watch where, watch this space, because this will grow.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, and yes, I concur with, uh, councillor Murphy. Uh, this, this will be a great event, it's a great opportunity, especially when you start talking about statewide cup and the. Uh, I'm not gonna pronounce it, because I always get it wrong, as a cup final, um. It will bring, uh, people from all around, uh, Taddy to have a look at the, this event. I know it's eleven thousand dollars for one day, um. So in perspective, it's, uh, probably still worth, uh, that, that type of amount of money with the, uh. Commodation and the sales that are. Accommodation and the sales that the Devonport City Soccer Club will enjoy, uh and it just also goes to show that. If you do it, they will come, and we're supporting uh great sporting organisations with their efforts. In being able to provide learning facilities for events and space. For our local community to enjoy, to uh be healthy and welcome and wise, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, I I have a question, um. Essentially, we're taking it from the national skills acquisition phase, and it was a business decision by soccer football Tasmania. A business decision to all of a sudden say, take the money from that and we'll put it into. The grand final essentially, and so we can have a grand final here, um. I'm I'm not sure, and I asked the president of the soccer uh club. Is there a precedent for clubs contributing, uh your council's contributing eleven thousand? Um is it normal? Uh he did not. He didn't know and said that was, he's got downed it because this is a. S- football Tasmania request to change it, not not anything to do with the with the soccer club. Um and so. What and I, in our discussions, I said I'm very supportive of the uh national skills acquisition. Um s- sponsorship from the council. I'm not sure why we're paying. Uh paying to have the grand final here, when they don't have the grand final. Of what, we don't know if they pay, maybe someone might know, do they pay the other councils pay to have the grand final? Or is it just a one-off special for Devonport? I. Do you see anyone there?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Skirby, can you give him a comment?
Three, they were unaware of what other councils did want to contribute.
Any further questions or comments, councillor Ennis?
So, um essentially, it's, we're gonna be hosting, oh. Devonport Soccer Club will be hosting the um the grand final, and we're we're a major sponsor of it. Um and an opening for the wonderful new facility up there, which is really good. With um the premier and a lot of you other people coming along and seeing the great facility you have up there. And. Yeah, I I, as I said to the pre- uh the president of the soccer club. I'm still amazed that we're paying to do that rather than. Putting the money into the skills acquisition program. Uh I I like the idea of that, I do support it, I do see. Uh if they were going to reschedule it, maybe we could have reallocated it at another time, or is this an additional? Additional eleven thousand and when they reconvene the. Skills ac- acquisition thing that we will chip in again. Is that is that the idea?
So that either. Thanks, councillor Ennis. Yes, okay. Any further comments or questions, councillor Martin?
Good question, uh without me going, am I typing and typing et cetera here? But I thought that the uh uh Football Tasmania had decided that uh. There wasn't enough numbers for the skills acquisition festival, so therefore it wasn't viable, so they've taken the opportunity of. Transferring or reallocating the funds to make sure that Devonport actually has an event and all trash people. Uh come up to enjoy the opening of a new facility, a council has been backing with the. Devonport City Soccer Club and enjoy other economic vendors to throw from that. Uh did um, in talking to uh the question uh in regards to that, which I'm getting nods. But did, when you spoke to the president of soccer club, did he say whether he agreed with the the um. Transfer of funds?
Okay.
Yep, uh he he said yes, he uh suggested it. So uh he he suggested it and he did, he did mention um that the junior soccer club was supportive. But I did speak to someone from the junior soccer club who.
Just answer that question. Councillor Hall.
Yeah, man, I have no problem supporting this motion. Um Devonport Cup is just huge for Devonport and its economy and to have. Extra things for our kids to go to and to be inspired. To uh where they might want to go when they get a little older, I'm all for the motion.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Sheen?
Thanks, man. Yeah, it's unfortunate they couldn't get the notice from um each state, each state clubs, that's a concern. Um but they've provided another event which will bring um. Tourists and visitors into the city, which I think is appropriate for us to support.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? No, I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Uh thank you, man. Um just just for clarification, um. This isn't the grand final as such in the traditional sense of the word, it's actually the Lacazza Asia Cup. Um final, which is a knockout competition, um which Devonport has been successful in winning um three times in the last eight years. Um subsequently, that has seen A League content uh brought to Valley Road and some of the biggest in the worst weather. Um attendances of crowds, but, you know. Something that hasn't been seen since the glory days of Bernie and and Devonport playing AFL. On a on a Saturday afternoon, so in a grand fun, but um. The the Laker Soldier Cup, as I said, in in bringing motion forward, um. This has, this will potentially act as seed funding for the growth of a bigger event, and the fact that we will have. Um a hundred and thirty four junior teams. Here in Devonport now, Devonport Junior Soccer Cup on the King's Birthday long weekend is Devonport's biggest vent event on its calendar. By far, economically, participation, everything. This is only going to further enhance that, and it's an opportunity for council. Um to provide confidence to football Tasmania in supporting the clubs, as I said, you know. From a cost perspective, that those clubs would have to travel to Devonport, there would be an accommodation for teams. Who would be participating, two southern teams, two southern teams again coming to Devonport. That's in excess of potentially a hundred people. They've got to stay somewhere, that's a hundred bed nights. We start doing the economics of this, it's big numbers. That's on top of, you can't get accommodation in Devonport, Holst and Bernie and Dela Rains, it is on Devonport Junior Soccer Cup weekend. So economically, it's just going to be a fantastic boom, um so. I I just wanted to clarify that the Lacazza Asia Cup um is. Is something that sits outside of the ordinary season. This is the pathway to the Australia Cup. Um which sees the best Premier League teams around the country going into a round robin knockout competition. Um and and subsequently, uh again, has the potential to expose Devonport because. If the strikers manage to make it again and have a home ground advantage, that'd be fantastic, because. To have that opportunity to potentially bring A League content um to our community and to a wonderful facility and to showcase again. Um how progressive we are here uh in Devonport, um and with support of council, what can be achieved. Again, is a real testament to our commitment to ensuring that we grow our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? I'll go to Sharpen's, please. For the motion is councillor Murphy, councillor Wilczynski, councillor Martin. Councillor Hollister, councillor Moore, councillor Sheen, councillor Jarman and against councillor Ennis. That is successful, thank you. Uh we are on to five point eight, which is response to proposed local government electoral bill. Office of Local Government Discussion Paper Recommendation is there, if I can have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, and a second to place.
Thank you.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Martin.
Um thank you, man. A- again, it's been discussed heavily at workshop, um. The submission does accurately reflect the sentiments from um those workshops, um. It'd be interesting to see where it ends up.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Uh thank you, as councillor Murphy said, the the submission actually reflects the sentiments of council. Of we recent workshop, that's refreshing. Um I noticed that uh for the uh attendance voting model. Uh that we ask, um. I missed that. New citizens, uh citizenship should be the mandatory level of to vote. To do otherwise, will incur additional costs on rate pays, so the position there is uh valid. Uh as with the deputy mayor, uh saying that the council has supported this. 假设when the mayoral, mayoral, mayor is unavailable. Uh with a mandate to uh support mayor as needed is the position of the deputy mayor, and that's very important. Uh role that the deputy mayor has is to support the mayor, uh and. Technical reforms, I've made an O T E requirements of three signatures for a community person to stand for council, um. You know, I think that's uh over overdone, um I. From a community person point of view, that wants wish wishes to represent their community. Whether one person supports them or not, gives them the opportunity to put their hand up and stand with council. And to see if he has, if they have support uh around the community for what they're standing for. Uh the pre nomination training program, um. I would support it if the same applied state federal nominations or their elections and for their positions. But they don't, but they want the local government to do so, which I think is uh very critical of the state federal. Uh government regards to that, um and I think as pointed out, reforms twenty nine thirty two needs more. 这个地方and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from councillors, councillor Ennis?
I agree with councillor Martin, particularly on that, you know, the the law uh of um. That I expect by local government as compared to state and federal government and, yeah.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Henry Hollister?
Yes, um supportive recommendation, I think we're not all involved now, the government will do what they like.
Oh gosh, thank you. Further comments or questions? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
Uh thank you, man. I I think it's worth noting that um, you know, Devonport City Council has been very pragmatic throughout this entire process and. And we stuck to our guns, uh we've been criticised for it, but um at the end of the day. The community understands that we need fewer councils, um and the fact that they've walked away from that particular process is. You know, very disappointing, um however, we've done the very best weekend with respect to providing um our input into that. Um, you know, and still, um as I'd like to quote one of my mentors in local government. Um past previous councillor, Mr. Leon Perry, they're just going to continue to keep the can down the road. So, believe in that.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh five point nine is the Technology One software enterprise contract extension. Recommendation is there, if I can have a move of place. So councillor Hollister and councillor Moore, really, councillor Hollister.
Yes, we've had technology ones for, yeah, the twenty years, most of the time I've actually been on council. Um there's been a bit of debate over the years as to how much money we spend on I T, but I think. This council has proven well and truly that that's mainly what's spent, um. Other councils around the state come to us to follow up things, um. Also, probably later than they have in the past. But it's very important that we actually keep up to date with the upgrades. I know in the past we were behind at one stage, so that's probably ten fifteen years ago, and I think. We need to keep up with this technology, because they were looking for something and they're not using it. So I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor.
Uh yes, I'm happy to support the recommendation. I note that. There was no tender process because there wasn't anything comparable to something we've been using for so long. And we are adding also the project lifestyle management module. Um I also note that budget for I T is actually forecasted to be under budget, so this is a good spend.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you, man. Um yeah, again, no brainer, common sense again, just the simple fact being. If there was another option, um the risk that we would experience considering a significant investment. You know, Devonport is now recognized as the the smart city, um. You know, that's that's been proven and been driven by our deputy general manager and our our C E O. He's a good deputy C E O, doesn't he? He needs deputy general manager, isn't he, deputy C E O? We'll call him deputy C E O for the night, because um deputy C E O. So, um and that's been recognized Australia-wide, um the fact that if. We weren't kind to consider, and it's a matter of um statutory process that we have to do this. Um because we haven't received any other tenders and we haven't taken its tender. Um I think this is acknowledgement of the fact that the system we have works. And I suppose the age of philosophy isn't broken and fix it. So we're improving it, putting a bit of grease on it, we're gonna make it a bit slicker, um we're gonna bowl and cut the extra bits and pieces on. And it's still going to be the number one formula racing car in this state, from an L G A perspective. So, congratulations and I commend it to my fellow councillors to endorse.
Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? If not, I'll ask councillor Hollister to close. Say councillor.
After the previous comments, can I say anything else?
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. On six is information, six point one is workshops and briefing sessions. If I can have a move, please. Councillor Murphy and a second to, councillor.
Yeah.
Councillor Murphy, please.
Mealy procedural, man.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
I concur with uh or uh councillor Murphy.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Councillor Murphy to close then.
Councillor Martin, showing his age there, man. Referring to the whole, um consider it close, man.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Carried unanimously. Six point two is the mayor's sponsor report, if I can have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second to.
No second.
Councillor Wilczynski, thank you, councillor Murphy.
Uh yet again, man, you uh continue to um. Really set the pace with respect to uh engaging our community more.
Thank you, councillor Wilczynski.
We have nothing to add.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, councillor Hollister?
Question. In Rickwood Call Butler.
What?
That's in my school, mate.
I didn't ask him. I'll have to find him, okay, he's from the church, you'll be right on.
Yeah.
There you go. And he's a friend of the Rotary Club. Of walks, isn't he? Or Butler? Devonport Rotary Club.
Right.
I don't know. I didn't ask him, I was always not an hour ago, but, there you go. Thank you. Councillor Sheen.
That's me. Yeah, no, I um just wanted to note, um thanks for attending the funeral service of Brandy Herbert. Um um look, she's just such a, she was such a treasured, um. Community cause, I mean, I can't, I think I can't, it's probably the word I was struggling to find, thank you, um. She taught me piano, I think she taught half Devonport piano back in the day. But what a role model and what a life well lived, so um thanks very much for attending the funeral of half everyone else in the. In another busy month.
Thank you. Um Brandy Herbert actually wrote me a letter when I became mayor, might be crying, she may as well leave, thank you, councillor Ennis.
Okay, um I know she met with the T T line, but they uh tell me that they're gonna start work over there on the bird. And uh that would be really good.
It would. We have sent some updates to the councillors.
Yeah.
Um they are keeping touch with us and.
Worked twenty four seven. Yes, which is pretty good.
No pain, no gain.
Yeah, looking forward to that, um as many of our people, I reckon, around the city are, and Tasmania and Australia, probably.
Thank you internationally. My brain. Thank you internationally. My brain. Yes, and we will keep up to us. So if they tell us anything. Uh any further comments or questions? Not on councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, you have been busy. I know that uh there's a lot of events going on in Devonport. So I do do note, there's no mention of you meeting with Brett for the Devonport.
I I didn't meet with him.
You didn't?
He rang me.
Well, that's not what you conveyed in the phone call.
No. I didn't get to talk to you while you left your message.
That's correct, and after recording a message. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the councillors? If not, I'll ask councillor Murphy to.
You're right.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Six point three is the C E O's report. If I can have a move please.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. And a second there. That's a good. Councillor Wilczynski, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh yes, ma'am, it's it's all there. Again, the C E O said a busy month. Um. Be interested to get to feedback how the conversation with Mr Scott Wade from the P C Y C. Is heading um taking consideration they're looking to increase their presence. Is there anything you can you can provide? With respect to um some direction and indication of what that may look like?
Through you, ma'am. And Scott was just up the northwest coast, you're going through to their facility in Burnie and just took the opportunity to come in and update me on. Or really just to reinforce what he previously said that they were. Pending to be involved and increase their presence in Devonport. No, the city claims. Just want to keep in touch.
Understood, alright.
Um. I've got councillor Wilczynski to speak next, if that's all right. Thank you. Did you second the motion?
Uh just on that, um C E O, the taxi combined service had a few people. Asking, what are we doing in it? Um we're not doing anything as council. Have we helped them get. Their business on the road again or?
Or ten.
It's really good. So ma'am, I met with one of the taxi companies and we're still trying to get in touch with the other one. Um just looking for feedback around, just hearing from them around what their challenges are in. Voting taxi services in Devonport and public transport services. So we talked about, you know, connection at the airport. Uh some of the challenges they've got. Yeah, they raised some good points, one around training drivers, that's their their biggest issue and. Um there's suggestions around some of the. Uh regulations that they have to comply with and how that might be um simplified to make it easier and and we. Uh met one of the operators and sort of leaned it. Or the other one, once we get their feedback, we uh committed to writing to the government to raise those questions, those issues.
Yes, uh um something that comes forward is people go out to restaurants or or to go. And use a car, a taxi, um and there's no one to turn up. And also no one to transport them back home. Um so. It'd be good if we can follow that through. That's a certain issue.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, councillor Holster? You had questions, sorry.
Yes. Going back to P C Y C. Twenty years ago, we used to have a P C Y C year. Um the government funded all the police under the hard position. Which meant that soon as they found a better job, we loved them. So we. Spent a lot of the time ready to be a principal for a manager's position. We had a sports trailer, it was full of sporting gear. I played that the same level of ability when we closed soon. So I just think if we do so do something, we need to make sure it's covered properly. Otherwise you can't get the staff. And then Bernie, I don't know, your system, I suppose. Several police officers. Happened. And. The facility's seven. I think we need to make sure it's like there can be a plan there to find it properly and not one that I did before. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Enes?
Okay, um. I I just wondered if did the Test H O C E O have anything to say about um future plans for Devonport? I know it's about the northwest region, but our city. Is there any plans for that, us?
Yes, through you, ma'am. Uh yeah, broadly talked about where they saw. Um the facilities in Devonport heading longer term. Talked about some opportunities. Went through some of that. It was interesting. Um Grant, the current um C E O of Test H O has resigned. Was actually finishing up very shortly, say. There'll be someone replacing. Hope they are working on a master plan for the northwest, for the state, I believe.
Hopefully they get a C E O, we will put a canteen back in the Devonport building. Which would be great.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Not on ask councillor Murphy to close.
You said it first, man.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Six point four is the monthly operational report. If I can have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Moore? Councillor Murphy? Councillor Moore?
Only absence of councillor Ronnie.
Had to be soon.
It'll be short. Um congratulations. Monthly report is a great read. Couple of special notes. One is it was great to have the Hobart Hurricanes up and the support that they got. That was fantastic. Um also noting that the meeting and convention centre bookings are really high. And pleasing also to note that fifty seven percent of that is community bookings. Which means that it's not just for office people and it's not just for businesses, that our community is booking. Um I do have one question about that, which I'll ask in a moment. Um the other thing to note was the biggest Facebook. Post, which was the state markers, which really does prove that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And I can't wait till those things are illuminated because. I think once people understand the story, that the navigation markers. And the history that's been built into those structures, I can't wait to see what that looks like on both ends of Devonport. Um I just have a question about, there's mention about a booking system. Maybe called Bookable or something like that. Is that an internal system or an external system? Like, are we gonna be able to book things through that or is it just for in staff?
Oh, yeah, through you, ma'am. Um Bookable is um a third party system that council has invested in. For booking council uh facilities, such as this room and convention centre.
Thank you. Thank you. Well done. In the absence of councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh thank you, ma'am. And in the absence of councillor Martin, it's always exciting to. He comes up with uh with respect to this report, because this is a very detailed report. He. Very much like chasing and getting, gets you into a fine tooth pain. Um. One thing that I noticed in the report was the incidences have nearly tripled since February. Last month, we only had a total of twenty eight incidences. This month, we're up eighty seven. Is there any? Uh um let out going to specifics, I haven't got um last month's report there in front of me. Um with respect to um. Any, it it's just it's just a reporting or is that actually what happened in the month of February? Um yeah, I mean, it's just a big jump. Um going from a total of twenty eight and twenty one incidents reported from council perspective. Um versus eighty seven. It's a big number.
Yeah, through you there. Um that could be an error. I can check that for you, but. What we do do is encourage reporting and we certainly have had an increased um in recent times with reporting. Um but yeah, I can certainly clarify um with that bigger script or not.
Thank you.
Yeah, just um specifically, I must go back to that page. Um I just noted that some. Just barely need to say. Oh, thank you. Sorry, here we go. Um. Twenty two incidences of property damage, which is nearly what what occurred as a total of um. Of uh council incidents last month. Thirteen personal injury ones, that would probably be cause for concern. Um twelve motor vehicle incidents. Um. Ten hazards, which you would expect. Um. And then thirteen personal injury incidences with members of the public. Um yeah, that 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 sort of, those those numbers just seem a little bit. Obscure compared to other months.
Yeah. No, through you, ma'am. Um I will check the figures, but certainly um I'm I'm not disputing that they're not correct. Um but just as a point of clarification, all of those public ones and the employee ones are thoroughly investigated. Um and there's certainly um don't lead to any claims on council. Um but yeah, there was certainly a significant increase in ordered incidents in last uh compared to last month.
Thank you. Councillor Enes?
Thank you. I I'd just like to ask about the illegal campers. Have we got anyone that goes around and. Taps on the window and says move on or anything like that or 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 whatever because. I've come across a few and they haven't been that pleasant when I try to engage.
The stone?
Yes, so through you, ma'am. Yes, we do have um two safety compliance officers that do regularly check those illegal campus. The challenge for us, um certainly in recent times, is there are a lot more homeless people um in the area. Uh very difficult to deal with. Uh we do use some of the services in our community services area to help us deal with that. Uh but yeah, certainly we are monitoring that. Uh at times we get task police involved if we need to. Um but yeah, it is certainly a concern for us. Um and it is difficult for people to find alternative accommodation.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I was mainly referring to people in camper vans and stuff like that that just. Think they'll park anywhere rather than go somewhere appropriate. Um yes, it's a shame that we've got all that number of.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? If not, I will ask councillor Morgan to go over.
Consider it closed, yes.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Item seven would mean that we would move into the session. Thank you. Councillor Martin, councillor Murphy.
Me and Seigman.
Councillor Martin.
Nothing to it.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? If not councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it close.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. We will therefore be closing this session at seven twenty nine. Thank you. Hey, so that was sort of attended in the gallery. Uh and thank you to the staff. Thank you to the councillors and for the quick. Combine and then.